Hello, welcome and good evening to the Planning Commission meeting of July 11th, 2018. Can we have a roll call, please? Please rise for the invocation led tonight by Commissioner Porter, along with the pledge led by Commissioner Huber. Once again, welcome everyone. We have just a handful of agenda items tonight, and if you are not familiar with how the Planning Commission meetings are run, we go through each agenda item one by one. First, the staff will give us an update and a report on what that agenda is about. Then the commission may have some discussion. Then we open up the public hearing where anyone in the audience or the public can testify and talk to the commission. Then we close that public hearing and we come back for a decision. So that's how we handle these items. So we'll start with item number one. Staff report, please. I'm sorry, we have to approve some minutes first from June 13th, 2018.
If there are no additions or corrections, and I would like to note that this meeting is by 11. I will move to adopt, to approve the June 13th minutes.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Do to approve the minutes of the June 13th, 2018 regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now, agenda item number one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda item number one is planning case number P L A N 18-00026. This is a three-year time extension to 589 single-family residential lots. This is comprised of eight separate tentative track maps. This is generally located, sorry, generally located north of the California aqueduct and east of US Highway 395. This three-year time extension would constitute the final time extension allowable under the subdivision map act for the current tract and would provide an extension of the proposal through November 9th, 2021. The environmental assessment was previously completed on this project and all mitigation measures remain applicable in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. There was minor updates in addition to these which the applicant is aware of and agreeable to, which is bring into conformance for clarification purposes primarily. No new additional requirements were added to the conditions that were previously existing. As proposed, the maps meet the single-family design guidelines. They include cul-de-sacs, curvilinear streets, pie-shaped lots. Because of the size of the tract and the addition of a two-acre park site, staff finds that overall that the maps, when looked at as a whole, meet the intent of the single-family design guidelines and comply with Title 16 Development Code. That being said, staff supports proposal as condition.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Seeing that, I will then open up the public hearing if there's anyone to address the commission on item number one. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Do to approve case P L A N 18-00026 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Good luck on that project. Item number two is an applicant that my real estate company is familiar with through client relationships past and present. So to eliminate any perception of any kind of conflict, I'm gonna opt to recuse myself from this agenda item and turn it over to Commissioner Porter.
Agenda item number two is a public hearing. Could we have staff report?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and fellow commissioners. Item number two is case P L N 17-00027. It is a tentative track map with a proposed mitigated negative declaration to allow for the development of a 66-lot, single-family residential subdivision. This is located west of and abutting Cypress Avenue between Ottawa Street and Niskwali Road. The site is a narrow site that's located between existing development. It's actually bisected by Wynona Street. So it's the maps that you're seeing in front of you, there's actually two portions of it that actually look somewhat identical. But the subdivision is accessed off of, will be accessed off of Cypress Avenue, and there'll be cul-de-sacs on each end of the segments of the subdivision. It meets the intent of the code and all the development standards. Proposed cul-de-sacs will have pie-shaped lots at the end of each of the cul-de-sacs. Also, it has varying lot widths. And instead of going with a fenced-off basin for stormwater retention, what they've done is exaggerated the width of the landscape assessment districts that'll go along the street frontage. So you'll have like an enhanced landscape area that'll also function as a water quality basin at the same time. So with that, staff recommends approval as condition, and we're here if you have any questions.
One of the questions I want to ask, Wynona is gonna go through that.
Yes, Wynona is a circulation element street as a collector, so it will continue.
It doesn't show on the map. That was one of my concerns.
And it is, it is hard to see because the map isn't actually on just one page. Page 178 of the agenda and 179, they're actually two maps, and then Wynona Street is the match line in between. So if you, you see, it's a, it's a long, it's a long map, and then Wynona, Wynona will bisect in the center.
Okay.
So the developer will be required to improve Wynona Street along its frontage and then also install all the other frontage streets, which is Cypress, Niskwali, and Ottawa Street.
And I will declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone wishes to speak to this item. Are you the applicant? Oh, okay.
I was here if there's any questions. I don't think there's gonna be any questions, but they asked me to come represent him because he's off in Hawaii, so I figured I better.
Yeah, there's going to be questions. I happen to know that there will be, so they handy. And then I have Hazel Tifar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I actually live on Cypress. So if you're gonna build those homes on Cypress Avenue, going down Cypress, is there going to be a retaining wall, a block wall, in that new tracking house?
Saying yes.
Or the landscape, yeah.
Okay. Has the city of Victorville even taken in consideration putting more homes in there? We got a new school, what, a couple years ago, between Ottawa and Yates. The speed on that street is awful, awful. I call the police all the time. I call Victorville parole, I mean, city traffic or whatever. I've called so many times to get someone out there to check into this traffic. We're gonna have a fatality one of these days, and it's gonna be sad because it's gonna be someone's child. Is the city even taking that into consideration? I've complained so much, they come out from Niskwali to Wynona, there's no speed limits. Now from Wynona to the front of my house, my neighbors, to my left, they put a 25 mile an hour sign. Further down, they put one closer to the school. That is not stopping the traffic there. It's terrible. That needs to be taken into consideration before these homes are built. Has, excuse me, has anybody thought of that? Speed control. I've asked about speed bumps. I've asked for the police to come out here. Sit in my yard, I don't care. Lot of us neighbors had told them. Monitor these streets before a fatality happens. We have cars that parks on the streets that are not being moved. You call to report them, they're still there. You have vehicles that park on the sidewalk in the street. You have to constantly be calling until finally someone comes out and takes care of that matter. Now we're gonna put 60 more, 66 more homes, jeopardizing our children, our grandchildren, our loved ones. A fatality, is that what it's gonna take before something's done with this street? Bringing more homes in. Answers, please. Everyone's quiet. That's what I get from the city.
Excuse me. Mr. Ginkler, isn't it residential is 25 miles an hour? Is that not right?
Yes, it is.
A typical residential street with a certain density is 25 miles an hour, but it's not quite that simple because on major streets, we typically do a speed survey, and the speed survey determines the speed limit. So it really depends on the details of that particular street. I'm not gonna be able to tell you the specifics on the streets, on the perimeter of this tract. Off the top of my head, we would have to obtain that information.
We talking what, 40 miles, 100 miles, which is what they do on the street? We have kids that race two and three cars down that street. It's like a racetrack.
And as far as the speed limit time they put in, it's useless.
We've asked for several things to be done, and they're just telling us the city can't put speed bumps because it's a hazard to the driver. My son suggested me to go out there and film it and bring it in, show it to you guys. I didn't know legally if I could do that because of maybe catching someone's license number and causing, you know, havoc, and so I didn't do that. Set a camera up out there, watch the speed. It's worse than the 15 freeway. It's worse than the fifteen freeway come between hours of, say, seven-ten, seven-fifteen, until about eight o'clock. You have to keep your doors shut, because all you hear is choo-choo-choo-choo. After school hours, it's the same thing, choo-choo-choo-choo. After work hours, it's the same stinking thing.
They don't seem to slow down at all.
And then we wanna put more homes.
Vice Chair Porter, what we can do is get the information from the card from the speaker and work together between the engineering department and the police department and see if we can take a look at the enforcement event area.
I didn't call the chief of police here. We'll put it on the board, we'll house someone patrol. And I know unfortunately, we have a lot of crime here in the high desert. We don't have a lot of officers to control everything. Something has to be done. I don't wanna see a fatality.
Mm-hmm. Yep, we can have them look at it.
I sure hope so, if our fatality happens.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Chris, did you want, did you wanna ask these questions from the lectern?
Hi, I'm Christina Sprague, and you might have already answered some of these questions, but we're, we're in the neighborhood right next to it, Sandalwood Estates, and we just wanted to get an idea of what it might impact us, because we are a fifty-five-plus community. And I know that when we purchased our homes, we were under the impression that the areas behind us and to the side of us were also fifty-five-plus. I've since learned that that's not how it works, but that's what we were told when we purchased. So my home is located on one-five-nine-three-zero Foxwood Road, and my question was, will there be seniors only in this development, or is it definitely families?
On the...
Will curbs, streets, and sidewalks be installed to access Sandalwood Estates, or is that basically all encompassed in that area?
Curb, gutter, and sidewalk along all the frontages of Cypress, the interior roads, and Wynona.
Okay, but not going over to Sunwood and the neighbor...
Improvements will be constructed now, will end the western boundary, would end at the western frontage of this track.
Okay. Okay, and I would assume there aren't going to be any other ingresses or egress driveways that would access through the Sandalwood Estates, because we do have...
No, all the ingress and egress will come out to the east on...
Okay, now I have two questions that you might be able to answer also. Did the developer acquire only the designated lots in this plan, or does he plan to develop the lots, the property located northwest to Ninth Street and behind the present Sandalwood Estates?
As far as I know, what we're involved in is only on these two.
Okay.
I think that that's a different owner.
Okay, thank you. Also, do you have any idea of what time you will start the development?
Righting us to get it done and get it approved, so... But his financial and everything is at, but I know he's itching to move forward, so...
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who... Did you fill out a white card for us, sir?
Pardon?
Would you fill out, when you're through?
I'm a lot of trouble hearing anybody here. I can't hear back there.
Would you fill out one of these white cards and give it to...
Would I fill one out? Sure.
Uh-huh, when you're through.
Okay, I have property on Autumn Wood, and this map is very vague here. I was wondering, my back fence is six foot from the back of my house. I wanna know how this development's gonna join to that wall there.
Can I answer that? You live to the west of this property? Okay, there is a slope and retaining wall on that backside to protect the existing properties and make sure there's no changes to the demography of your lot, and then transition down into the new lots.
Very short distance to the, you know, fence, you know, just, will that be the back of the houses? Is there be another...
No, no, there's a backyard setback.
Oh, the backyard setback, okay. That was my only question I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, if you like, I can give a staff analysis on the last questions that were received, if you, if you like. As far as the restriction of age, this particular map is, is just a standard R1 zoning. The city does not have any restrictions on age. The developer may choose to do that at a later date, but the city, the city would not get involved with that. The improvements, as, as the map stands here, they're required to improve curb, gutter, sidewalk along the frontage of their track only, since they already have access, two points of access to the site. Access will be only from Cypress, so each segment of this track has two points of access from Cypress. There will not be access to the track from Niskwali or Wynona or Ottawa. The...
I'm sorry, you said that there was only one access?
So each, each of the tracks, Karen, if you could switch it back to the track design? So this is the segment of the track between Wynona and Ottawa. There is two points of access to the track from Cypress, and then it, it transitions into a cul-de-sac street within the subdivision.
Oh, I see.
So, and then there's another segment that looks similar to this, that's, it's this section here between Niskwali and Wynona that has points of access and same, same scenario with a cul-de-sac design for that. The, the subdivision that is to the west of this is a senior community, it is a planned unit development. It's, it's zoned separately from what you're looking at today. This is just a standard R1 zoning for this track, but the development to the, to the west, the senior housing development, there is a separate owner that owns a segment of that that hasn't been developed yet. But that, that segment is subject to the fifty-five and older requirements. As far as timing, this is, what's before you today is a three-year approval. If the planning commission approves the map, it'll give the developer three years to record the map. So it could fluctuate. The developer could opt to come back in three years and ask for a time extension, or the developer, after receiving approval, could move forward with a final map and start construction. It's hard for staff to gauge at this point, and we haven't received any indication from the developer on how fast they wanna move on it. As far as standards go, there was a gentleman that asked about his property abuts the, the track. So, yeah, there, there would be, as, as the applicant's representative mentioned, a retaining wall there, and then the, the structures for R1 standards are a minimum of twenty-foot rear setback. So unlike the planned unit development, there will be a larger setback of the structure from what the planned unit development requirements are.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the agenda item two? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed, and...
Yes, Madam Chair. I would, I would make a request of the representative for the owner of this project. Sir, if you could approach the podium. As you have heard and listened to what I've heard as relates to the concerns of citizens of the city of Victorville, what is your goal, or to convey this message to the project owner?
I will, excuse me, I will shoot him an email tomorrow morning to let him know what was discussed and what was brought up and what the concerns are. It'll be their decision as far as the developers to, as they're moving forward, and in communication with the city, to decide what their timeframe is, and I do not know if they would look at doing it, senior housing or family housing, or what their plans are, as I'm not directly involved with that.
I, I just suspect that you will convey what was conveyed to us, and I would appreciate that.
Okay, that's why they asked me to be here, so...
Thank you very much. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, and what's the pleasure of the commission?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the attached mitigated negative declaration with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project and adopt resolution number P-18-040 approving tentative tract map case number PLN 17-00027, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Commissioner Huber to approve case PLN 17-00027 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurth absent from the dais.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number three is a tentative parcel map with an environmental exemption to allow for the creation of two parcels from one existing parcel located at one-four-five-five-seven-seventh Street. This is case number PLAN 18-00028. The subject site, you may recall, is in O'Reilly Auto Parts location, and when they located this site approximately three years ago in 2015, they updated the site with landscaping, parking lot design, building facade improvements, trash enclosures, and brought it up to conformance with current design guidelines. This proposal will constitute the separation of the two buildings on-site into two individual parcels. One parcel measuring approximately one point eight acres in size, and the second parcel approximately one point six acres in size. As proposed, the subject parcels would meet all requirements of Title 16 regarding lot size, area, et cetera, is also in conformance with Planning Commission policy PCP-1-74, which discusses ratios of lot to width, sizes of lots and tracks in subject parcel maps such as this. As proposed, they are conditioned to have shared access and parking agreements in place before recordation or in concurrence with recordation, because the site has always operated as such with a shared drive aisle on the Seventh Street and a shared parking scheme. Additionally, there is a unique condition on this one, condition twenty-three, which discusses the California Building Code. Once you put a property line, or once a common property line has a common wall in, in, in place, the California Building Code requires it to address a different type of fire rating, so the applicant has agreed prior to this meeting that they will do any kind of improvements required by the California Building Code to bring that, that shared wall into conformance with Building Code before recordation, and it is conditioned as such. Lastly, it is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section one-five-three-one-five entitled Minor Land Divisions. With that, staff supports proposal as conditioned.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on number three. Is anyone here to speak to us on agenda item number three? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman, I, we would find the project categorically exempt under section one-five-three-one-five of the California Environmental Quality Act entitled Minor Land Divisions and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number P-18041 approving case number PLAN 1800028, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Do to approve case PLAN 18-00028 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number four is a request to be continued to a further date. I will open up the public hearing on item number four. Is there anyone here to speak to us on item number four? Seeing no one, I'll make a motion to continue this item to the September twelfth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Commissioner Huber to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLN 17-00031 to the September twelfth, two thousand eighteen regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number five is same thing. It's a request for a continuance, so I will open up the public hearing on number five. Is there anyone to speak to us on number five? Seeing no one, I will make a motion to continue this item to the August eighth, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Commissioner Huber to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLN 17-00005 to the August eighth, two thousand eighteen regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number six, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number six is case number PLN 16-00029. This is a site plan and a tentative parcel map to allow for the build-out of the Dunia Plaza Shopping Center, as well as the subdivision of the property into five individual parcels from one existing twelve-acre parcel. As you may recall, this case has been continued several times due to some concerns by the neighboring property owner that were raised with existing CCNRs and access easements and so on and so forth. In the addendum to this case that was presented to the commission today, there has been proof of resolution to this, the issues, and they're working through the final signatures in their settlement agreement. So staff would note that that concern and reservation by the neighboring property owner has been assessed, and this project is ready to move forward at the current time. The current proposal consists of approximately one hundred and twelve thousand total commercial square feet, spread amongst two buildings with five tenants. As you can see from the plan, there's a health club planned, retailers, and the suite sizes range in size from eighty-two hundred square feet to forty-two thousand square feet. The initial review of this project, and the initial study, told staff to proceed with mitigated negative declaration, which has been included for your review. After the review period, as required by SEQA, staff received comments from the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, as well as the California Department of Toxic Substance Control. Both of these entities have had conditions added to the proposal, which should address their concerns adequately. Additionally, staff received comments from Caltrans ten months after the initial California Environmental Quality Act review closed. We assume that this was as a result of their review of our agenda when this item was previously continued. That being said, their concerns ask for a traffic impact analysis. Subject to SEQA guidelines, staff, or the city makes a determination on whether or not to respond to those comments when they receive after, and especially ten months after the SEQA clearinghouse had closed, based on the review of their comments and the fact that they asked for a traffic impact analysis. But there had previously be, there had previously been a traffic study performed on the site, as well as a contractor from the applicant had submitted proof that, in their professional opinion, the TIA was not required for the subject site, so staff chose to not add in any additional conditions or responded to the request for a traffic impact analysis by Caltrans. As proposed, the project meets all requirements of Title 16, including landscaping, parking. It matches the existing center and building materials, architectural design, color, et cetera, therefore fulfilling the requirements of the commercial design guidelines. Lastly, staff worked with the applicant to address the on-site access issue to the extent we could, given the fact that Dunia Road had a different intent when it was... we could, given the fact that Dunia Road had a different intent when it was originally developed, and the placement of Walmart changed that. The design that they provided is the most efficient design possible, given the existing improvements that were in place. Lastly, I would also like to add that the applicant apologized for not being present this evening. They've had some changeover in their office that led to some scheduling conflicts that did not allow them to be present for the meeting this evening. With that, staff recommends approval and supports the item as conditioned.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any questions of staff at this time? I'll open up the public hearing on item number six. Is there anyone here to speak to us on item number six? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the commission for any discussion and a determination.
Chairman Kurth, I move... ...a parcel map and adopt... ...portion of case number PLN 16-000... ...subject to the attached conditions of approval and adopt resolution of P-17... ...and a parcel map portion of case number PLN 16-000... ...subject to the attached conditions of...
I'll second that. Sorry.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Vice Chair Porter to approve case PLN 16-00029 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number seven, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurth. Item number seven is case PLAN 18-00029. It is a site plan and conditional use permit to allow for a pre-manufactured unmanned fiber optic telecommunications equipment shelter with an environmental exemption. This is located north of Eucalyptus Street, south of Sycamore Street, east of Mesa View Drive, and west of Highway 395. The applicant's proposing to build a 420-square-foot precast concrete equipment shelter that will be housed within a 4,500-square-foot walled project area. The facility will serve as a signal booster site for the adjacent fiber optic network that runs within Highway 395. The facility is needed due to the signal needing a boost every 75 miles, and the applicant's available if you have questions regarding the technical nature of why it needs to be boosted, but we fall within that 75-mile range where this fiber optic cable needs to be boosted. The site will not have any regular visits from people maintaining the site. We're only expecting about one visit per month, and it will not be accessed off of the adjacent Highway 395. They do have right-of-way access to get down to Eucalyptus Street, but it does meet the standards of the municipal code as conditioned, and we recommend approval. And if you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? I'll open up the public hearing on number seven. Is there anyone here to speak to us on number seven? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we find the project categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15303 entitled new construction and adopt resolution number P-18-038, approving the conditional use permit portion of case number PLN 18-00029, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and adopt resolution number P-18-039, approving the site plan portion of case number PLN 18-00029, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Commissioner Huber to approve case PLAN 18-00029 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And agenda item number eight is also a request to be continued. So I will open up the public hearing on number eight. Is there anyone here to speak to us on number eight? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and make a motion, continue this item to our August 8, 2018 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Vice Chair Porter to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLN 16-00004 to the August 8, 2018 regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks. Agenda item number nine is a recommendation of support for the designation of Route 66 as a national historic trail. I think the staff analysis was pretty self-explanatory, but is there any other information you'd like to give us, or does the commission have any questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, we're available if you have any questions, but we outlined it in the staff report, and this is a request from the California Historic Route 66 Association to lend support to the bill that's in Congress right now.
I don't really have any questions on the actual recommendation portion. I'm in favor of it, but it was interesting to see that you included some other information, which I'm glad that staff did, that showed other examples of historic points in Victorville, and I knew there was a number of them, but I see a few here that I didn't even know existed. And I was just wondering, since the Planning Commission is, you know, technically the Historic Preservation Commission, if there was such a time that a historic building needed to be, you know, brought up or presented, or, I guess basically what I'm saying is, how does that happen? Would it be a member of the public that would come to the city and suggest to us that building or this area should be deemed historic? How have we seen that in the past, and what would it look like in the future?
That's correct. It could come from citizen groups, residents. It could come from the planning commissioner, a planning commissioner that would like to look at designating a certain spot or point of interest to add it to this list. This is, again, just a, that point of interest, historic points of interest is just a city designation. It doesn't hold any state or federal designation, but it is something that, as a city, we hold as historic. So, but it's not held to some of the other standards that a state or federal designation would bring it to. But, yeah, staff could also bring forward other designations. It hasn't been looked at in some time. I'm glad you brought it up, but, yeah, we could, we could if the commission wanted to, you know, discuss it more, because it hasn't been updated since I've been here, and it's been over 13 years, so. But it is something to keep in mind that we have that, and we can add to it as we see fit.
Any of these, should one of these historic points of interest, are there any conditions or protections on these through the city? Should, say, for example, the Green Tree Inn sign, should somebody buy that property and want to tear it down or move it or change it? Are there protections, or is this just kind of...
My understanding, it's something that the Planning Commission would consider before we issue a demo permit. There's nothing restrictive that says that they shall be preserved. It's just a gesture from the Planning Commission City Council that these are historic to our community, but the process on how you go about modifying or removing these structures is still left open to those bodies, the Planning Commission and City Council. Yeah, so, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't hold any stipulation that they have to preserve it or go through a special process, but it is, it is something that we would consider if we ever had a request to modify or demolish some of these structures.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask our attorney whether or not it would be prudent on behalf of the city of Victorville to consider some sort of criteria as relates to what would be designated as a historical site. And this is a very good point, because historic means to me something of the past that's significant, and anytime that someone wants to revisit a, something of this magnitude, then I think we should have a criteria in place in which what can and cannot be done. That's my view.
Thank you. We should do. I don't think the city has in place any historic regulations at this point, right? Like any landmark.
There is, there is some adopted guidelines within, within the packet, but there's, there's not anything that I'm aware of that's codified.
Yeah, I think I would have to look into it a little more, but I think that it is possible to certainly have the city's own regulations for protecting monuments or places or signs that the commission thinks are significant. Certainly happy to look into that and see if there's something that we can do besides, you know, rely on a state designation or a federal designation.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point you made, and I'm not looking for too much more regulation, but maybe you're suggesting to take a look, take a look and see how other small cities are handling just some of their, you know, preserved assets, and if we do indeed need to have a little bit more protection, or if we are safe as is, but I wouldn't mind looking at that as well.
I was surprised that the old theater wasn't included in this list.
That's, uh...
Thanks.
Number one, I think we would like to see just, you know, whenever later on, how other cities, if they do have any... And as far as the recommendation to the city council, is it in agreement that we would recommend? Letter of recommendation formal?
Question. Quick question. When we talk about eminent domain, because it says here that, I guess, a historical site is, let's see, specifically prohibits the use of eminent domain to acquire property. So if there's going to be any altercations around, say, like a historical site, does that site have to be now deemed, or the status has to change? Or like, say, like if a road was going to be widened, I mean, if you had, or if something was going to be built around it that might nest up against it, you know? Does the, does the, does eminent domain, I mean, does that site have to be, that historical site, does the contents of it have to be changed as where it's no longer a historical site or not deemed a historical site anymore, or...
Yeah, so the, so the reference to eminent domain as it relates to this designation as a national historic trail is only that they can't proceed with, like, funding or assistance for projects that have eminent domain. It's not saying that you can't do eminent domain along any stretch of Route 66. It's saying that, that funding associated with the National Park Service won't, won't be provided towards eminent domain.
Oh, okay. All right.
But the one thing that I, it, it doesn't mean that they, it can't be modified, because Victor School was, was really modified some time back. And that's really nice with the...
Any other comments, questions? Is anyone in disagreement of recommending to the council to move forward with their letter of recommendation? We need a motion, or just a...
Sure, we did have a resolution, so, yeah, if you want to just make a motion.
Do I need to open up a formally opened public hearing?
If you have, it's a new business item, so that's at your discretion.
Okay. Just in case there's anyone to speak on number nine, public hearing's open. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing.
Oh, yes, the resolution. I move that we adopt resolution number P-18029 for the serving as a Historic Preservation Commission, recommending the city council to support the designation of Route 66 as a national historic trail.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Du to adopt resolution number P-18-029. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry, I was a little excited about all these historic sites, and I didn't realize there was a resolution. Sorry. In compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone out there to speak to us tonight on any matters within our jurisdiction? Okay, so with that, we will end with Plan Commissioner comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Marsh. Huber?
No.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had briefly discussed with the director regarding something I find would be beneficial for us if we were to take a visit regarding the boundaries of the city of Victorville. Approximately, we are somewhere in the neighborhood of 125,000 people as relates to the most populated municipalities in the state of California. We rank at 49, and I think it would be very beneficial for us to see how we have grown from a small town to a significant city here in the high desert. Additionally, I would take notice that we're projected to go as far as possibly 200,000 people in the city of Victorville. So I would like to know, and I think it would be beneficial for us, where that growth is going to come from and what it's going to look like. And so I think this would be extremely important for us as commissioners to do that. At some point, I recall us making a decision on property involving as much as 20 to 50 acres, and we held back because we could not project what steps would be taken, what progress would be taken 50 years from now. So with that said, I think we can be better at planning, we can be better at projecting if we are to take a view of our boundaries and take a look, or have an examination as to what we may look in the future. So that's my proposal. I yield back.
I just have, just one comment. It was recently that I was kind of the, one of the squeaky wheels that hit up our assistant city manager, Sophie Smith, regarding the illegal fireworks problem that, I don't know about everyone else's neighborhoods, but mine is getting pretty bad year after year, and it's, it's pretty bad noise pollution, and I know there's a lot of other residents that feel the same way. And so after contacting Sophie, and this was not, not, just maybe a month ago or so, she jumped right on it and worked closely with the Public Information Office, and I know you guys have probably seen in the press releases and some of the, some of the emails that we've been updated on, but I just wanted to say publicly... that we've been updated on, but I just wanted to say publicly that I was very impressed with the seriousness that, that, that city manager Metzler and assistant city manager Smith, along with code enforcement, animal control, and the sheriff's department took the steps to jump right on that. And not only did they work on public information pieces and social media pieces to make the public aware, they put together that task force that I was able to go out, you know, with the sheriff's department and code enforcement the first night that we went out on a Friday night. And I personally think it, it is making a difference, you know, seeing it from the streets because we didn't, we didn't get to, you know, cite a whole bunch of people or, you know, confiscate or anything like that, but just driving all the neighborhoods and streets of Victorville, you know, in the sheriff's car, in the patrol car, pulling up to residents saying, hey, we're the task force. You got any fireworks? No, no, no. But word gets out through these neighborhoods and I think just that alone, you know, really helped. And I thank the city staff for jumping on this over the last few years, right after Fourth of July. At least in my neighborhood, the booms were still happening and the animals were still afraid and it happened for at least two weeks. And now we're just a few days after the Fourth of July holiday and I'm just only hearing a couple per night and I have to assume that maybe something's been helped. Thank you, staff, and I, I look forward to next year working with you when we have our new fire department up and running and we'll be able to maybe even do a little bit better. Thanks. So with that, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned. Oh, questions from staff? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would like to just add to what Commissioner Do brought up as far as a tour of the city. Staff would be glad to offer a tour. My question is, is if you wanted to do it as a body or we could just take two of you at a time out or one of you at a time to give you a tour? Because once we, once we have three or more of you, we do have to notice it as, as a workshop and, and make it available to the public. But I'll leave it up to you. If you guys want, I can reach out to you individually and I could, I could give tours of kind of where growth is happening, where we foresee it to hap, happening, some, some of the issues we're, we're experiencing. But I'll leave it to you if you want it as a form of public workshop or we can take two at a time, one at a time.
It would be my preference that it, that we all go, that way we get feedback and interact with each other as to what we, our thoughts of what we are viewing and how we can make a difference. So I think it would be beneficial for all of us where to participate. We've done similar things in going down below, so I think this is something that's beneficial to all of us.
Mr. Chair, if I might interrupt, just, we might need to put this on a next agenda to make the decision as to what it is we're going to do since it hasn't been agendized this time, so. Commissioner Do brought it up and Director has offered up some suggestions, but I don't think we can actually make a, make a decision on it tonight.
Thank you for that.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, no, thank you for reminding us of that.
It's a Brown Act thing, so sorry.
And that's why I kind of didn't respond to what you were saying and I kind of moved on. Maybe we can just direct staff to present us maybe something on that basis at the next meeting that we can discuss and decide. Okay, sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any final comments of staff members? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.